And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First order, I'd like to call our meeting to order. First point of order would be approval of minutes, October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Questions, comments, motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye for o.
Aye.
Commissioner reports and comments. Vice President Baker?
Uh, yes. Good morning to everyone. Welcome to those here joining us today. The only thought that I had coming in was the facility down there on the Downsville Pike, the nursing home that they're gonna be, uh, I think the planning commission ordered it out to public hearing and I think before a major decision is made out, uh, made on that facility down there, I'm thinking they probably should come to the county commissioners. So I'd like to have some support for that issue to come to.
Yeah, I think the process that goes to public hearing them back to the planning commission, is that correct?
I, I believe that it requires a rezoning, so that would naturally come to the county commissioners.
Okay, very good. Yeah, you'll have.
Yeah, that's the way I understood it from the planning meeting.
You'll have our support on that. That was one of the things I wanted to mention, because I've received many calls.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kiefer?
No comment. I would just add that I would agree with Commissioner Baker that that, an issue like that, that has that kind of, um, questions in the community should come before us.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, I guess just to follow up. Yeah, I was at that planning meeting. I didn't vote, obviously, because it's, it's, it is gonna come before us, the way I understand it. And I too have started to get a lot of calls and emails concerning it, and I told them that, you know, we get that public hearing, speak out, and get it to us, and whatever. So, uh, on another note, I attended, uh, breast cancer awareness event out at, uh, HCC at the Ark. Nice turnout. Uh, Tom Reifert and Ryan Spencer did a, a real nice job. They had a parade of cars, all decorated up with pink balloons, and, uh, kudos to everybody who put that on. It was, it was a nice event, and for awareness. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Terry, in regards to your comments, if folks would want to Google October third and October fifth Herald Mail articles about that place, you'll get some good information about how all that came about. Uh, I urge you to, it's some interesting reading, and give you some factual information. And I've already asked, uh, when that hearing is scheduled, but it has not been, public hearing has not been scheduled yet, to my knowledge. So we'll make sure the public is aware of how to comment for that. And again, I also attended the breast cancer awareness program. My mom was a double breast cancer survivor. Her cancer was discovered by accident by Dr. Chaney on a routine visit, and most likely gave her an extra ten-plus years of good life having it discovered way in advance. So that was a day out there to, to honor the survivors and to remember those who didn't. Uh, with that being said, next I go to any staff comments, even though it's not listed. Kirk, do you have any? Krista?
No, I don't really have anything this morning.
Okay, Krista?
I have, the Washington County Recreation and Parks Advisory Board are requesting several approv-, um, approvals, and they are looking, they're looking for a, an appointment of Ralph Stottermeyer to serve a first three-year term from November first through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The reappointment of Sue Lowery to serve a first full term from December first, two thousand and twenty, through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and to reappoint Mr. Eric Michael to serve a fourth term from December first, two thousand and twenty, November thirtieth, through two thousand and twenty-three, as the ex officio Board of Education member, and to reappoint Christopher Malott to serve a first full three-year term from December first through November thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. With the reappointment of Eric Michael, they're also requesting an exception to the term limit as written in the bylaws.
Eric Michael is a representative of the school board, that's why you're asking for that exception?
Yes, mhm.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioners thoughts, comments on those suggestions?
I recommend to approve the appointments.
Second.
I have first and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next, I think we're gonna do a presentation for economic development. Is, Carmen, is that you that's here?
Yeah.
Okay, would you join me? Would you like to say a few words first about economic development? What's going on this week?
I wheelhouse. Um, every year, the state of Maryland, for the last ten years, has celebrated Economic Development Week in the state of Maryland to recognize the, um, economic developers, what they do for the economy, for the, um, way of life in Maryland. Uh, we typically do something every year to show appreciation to our local businesses. This year's a little different, so we're doing everything virtual and online. Um, we have registration for the businesses that they'd like to. We have a few giveaways this week, and we have a grand drawing at the end of the week for some advertisements on ninety-six point seven live. Um, and we appreciate, um, VOCC recognizing what our department does for economic development. Thank you.
And whereas the economic growth and stability of the state affects all regions and jurisdictions of Maryland and Washington County is an important component of the state's economic success and will highlight and promote economic development efforts in our county. Therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, hereby proclaim the week of October nineteenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty, as Economic Development Week, recognizing all the past, current, and future efforts of all those who participate and support economic development, private and public efforts at all level, federal, state, county, city, and municipality, signed and awarded this day by the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Thank you. And Commissioners, would you like to all join us up front? Carmen, you join us up front? Next on our agenda is citizens' participation. Please come forward, introduce yourself, and try to keep your remarks to three minutes. We won't cut you off right at three minutes, but try to keep your remarks to that timeframe. Um, thank you for being here. Please introduce yourself and address.
John Croker from Boonsboro. I wish to address today the issues of the selection committee for the Board of Education vacancy and measures to prevent transmission of corona-virus. The appointment of only registered Republicans to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education is a blatant assault on democracy. Instead of the government of the people, by the people, and for the people, the commissioners have willfully chosen to subvert democracy and appoint a partisan selection committee to fill a nonpartisan position. The commissioners have failed to make known their criteria for appointment to this committee. Was the primary selection criteria their membership in the Republican Party? Where is the representation for the fifty-six percent of registered voters in Washington County who are not registered Republicans? All members of this selection committee are guilty co-conspirators in this attack on representative government. The members of the selection committee can claim to be fair, but their political biases raise serious doubts. I also urge the commissioners and other elected officials to support wearing masks and practicing social distancing in public by their actions as well as their word. I witnessed Mr. Klein, Wagner, Corderman, Parrott, and Chain without masks or practicing social distancing at a, a recent rally. Mr. Parrott's birthday fundraiser gained national notoriety. Those who fail to follow official safety recommendations recklessly endanger the health of the entire community. Their failure to adhere to these recommendations is an insult to families who have lost loved ones and healthcare workers and others on the front lines in the fight against coronavirus. Maryland has experienced over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand coronavirus infections and over four thousand deaths. Washington County has reported over twenty-one hundred infections and forty-two deaths. Coronavirus cases are surging in West Virginia and Pennsylvania. Coronavirus cases are increasing in thirty-eight states and the District of Columbia. Many rural areas are experiencing dramatic surges. The virus has no respect for boundaries. Many people traveled to Washington County from areas with much higher levels of infections. Many people from Washington County travel to areas with much higher infections and return home. It is dangerously unwise to assume we are safe because infection levels are relatively low here. This is not a political issue. It is a scientific issue. We want the county and the economy to recover as quickly as possible. However, recovery will not occur until the coronavirus is brought under control. Please, set a good example for the county with your actions and urge others to follow your lead. I strongly urge the commissioners to walk the walk and not just talk the talk. So that, uh, our county and our country can build back quickly and better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda, construction bid award, HVAC, Virginia Avenue. Andrew?
Is the sign still up there, Danielle? Is the sign still up there to wipe that down?
Yes.
Just making sure. Yes. Good morning, Commissioners.
Pileations.
I'm here seeking a, a motion to award the contract for the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC work at one seven seven one eight Virginia Avenue, also known as the Board of Elections Building, to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, MS Johnson Company of Hegristown, for the base bid amount of ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. This project was advertised in the Herald Mail, on the county's website, and on the state of Maryland's website, e-Maryland Marketplace Advantage. Four bids were received and opened on Friday, September twenty-fifth, and are listed below. Uh, the low bidder as, uh, was MS Johnson Company, as I mentioned, for the ninety-eight thousand, four fifty. The bids were evaluated, and the low bid is in order. The engineer's estimate for the base bid work was a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. The existing HVAC system is insufficient in providing the heating and cooling needs for the newly renovated space. This work will be done in a phased approach, um, and I will point out that the all, add alternate work that was bid during this time, uh, will still need to be done at a later date, and we're not seeking to award that at this time, um, looking to secure a, a better price. So this project will consist of installing new heating cooling units, as well as new duct work, which will cover what we'll consider the office space area. In total, it's a ninety consecutive calendar day contract with anticipated notice to proceed in November twenty twenty, after, um, early voting and elections take place. And the completion date will be February twenty twenty-one. There are liquidated damages in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per calendar day beyond the completion date, and the project will utilize available funds in the systemic building account that's in the capital improvement plan. Are there any questions?
Andrew, do you know, um, this is our early, or our election center, correct?
Correct.
I was riding by there the other day, and, and I noticed that, um, on the side of the building, I, the name of the grocery store, I don't know if it's Food Line or Shop and Save.
Shop and Save.
It's kind of, you know, the paint's discolored and still, and still shows that name. Do you know what our timeline is for having some kind of, um, like branding, or to have our name on the building?
Correct. Brennan's here, he's the, and the project manager for a lot of the day-to-day, so we do have the sign out on the road, and I believe there's still plans to do front facade painting work. Um, do you have a date, Brennan?
The facade's already been painted. There's a sign that will probably be coming maybe in the next month or two.
Okay.
And the rest of the building hasn't been painted yet.
Okay, makes sense.
Some of that's related to the staining and leaking that's happening from that, and that's the next award we'll be talking about. Okay.
Any more comments? Did not entertain a motion to approve as recommended?
Motion to approve.
Sir, so I have first and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye for o. Thank you very much. Next up, construction bid award, roof replacement.
Thank you. Um, I'm seeking a motion to award the contract for the roof, roof replacement, uh, work at one seven seven one eight Virginia Avenue, also known as the Board of Elections property, to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Tecta America East LLC of Jessup, Maryland, in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, as the previous project as well, this was advertised in Herald Mail, county's website, on state of Maryland's website, e-mail and marketplace advantage. Uh, for this one, we received fifteen bids, and they were open on Thursday, October eighth, and they're listed below. Uh, the bids were evaluated, and the low bid is in order. The engineer's estimate for the work was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The existing roof is in need of replacement to maintain long-term integrity of the building. The project includes forty-five consecutive calendar days with an anticipated notice to proceed in November and a completion date in December of twenty twenty. The bid documents do include liquidated damages in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per calendar day beyond the completion date. Uh, and this project will also utilize available funds in the systemic improvements building account, BLD oh seven eight. Are there any questions?
Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
A first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye for o. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hegristown Urban Improvement Project Capital Bond Bill. Please come forward. Susan, introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Susan Buchanan, Director Office of Grant Management. I'm here this morning requesting a motion to approve the submission of the FY twenty-one Maryland Capital Bond Bill application, accept awarded funds, and approve execution of grant documents upon receipt from the Maryland Department of General Services, and also requesting a motion to approve the subsequent execution of a subrecipient agreement with the city of Hegristown. He will be added as a beneficiary on the capital bond bill. In two thousand and seventeen, Governor Hogan authorized five years of capital bond bill funding totaling seven point five million for the urban improvement project. The county has received the application packet for the third year, oh, excuse me, that'll be the fourth year, of funding in the amount of two point five million dollars. Once the application is submitted, the state will provide a grant agreement to the county for review and execution. Department of General Services has provided the application, and the total amount of funding authorized over five years is as follows. Two point, two thousand and eighteen, one point five million. Two thousand and nineteen, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Twenty twenty, five hundred thousand. Twenty twenty-one, two point five million. And twenty twenty-two, two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The funding will be used to reimburse costs associated with the urban improvement project, including the Maryland Theater expansion, Barbara Ingram School expansion, and proposed multi-use plaza. Once the application is submitted to the Department of General Services, a grant agreement for the funding will be sent to the county for execution. The Department of General Services is adding the city of Hegristown to the capital bond bill to allow them to receive reimbursement for expenses associated with the construction of the multi-use plaza. This addition will necessitate the execution of an additional subrecipient agreement between the city of Hegristown and county. Any questions or comments?
Susan, um, for the amount listed for, um, I suppose these are fiscal years eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, we've received those?
The first three, we, we've already received those agreements, submitted the applications, received the grant agreements.
Just checking.
Yes.
Thanks.
So this is like an administrative process?
This is part of the annual process to ensure that we have all the paperwork in place to receive the funds.
Any other comments, questions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Sir, second, I hear it, first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Next up, Community Coalition. I guess we're looking for Mr. Kurtzewell.
Running a little ahead of schedule, so we may.
They're coming in? Yeah, we're a couple of minutes ahead, won't give them a chance, though.
Well, we don't need them, are we?
Mr. Kurtzewell, Mr. Paul Frye, welcome.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Paul Frye, Chamber of Commerce, and the Community Coalition, along with Jim Kurtzewell, Greater Hegristown. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing us this morning. We wanted to, uh, give you an update on the coalition and where we're looking for the general assembly in twenty twenty-one. And before we do that, we do want to thank this body for your support over the years. Uh, it's been productive, and as Jim will talk about shortly, it's been even more important this year that we have representation in Annapolis because of COVID, they're not gonna have a lot of public testimony, there's not gonna be a lot of public, uh, in-person visits or meetings, and so this can be even more important this year. So as we look at how we did in twenty twenty, we'll look forward to twenty twenty-one. I'll turn it over to Jim.
Good morning, uh, everyone, and certainly good to be here. Beautiful fall day outside. Um, as Paul said, um, you know, we appreciate the support the Commissioners and staff have done in the coalition. We've probably had about three or four meetings for, so far, I guess, since August, to talk about agenda items. I know many of you have been there, appreciate your input and support. Um, I sent over a list of the draft Coalition Agenda Item List that should be in your packet. Kirk, do they all have that one? Or are you gonna hand that one out? Okay. Um, as Paul's saying.
We got them after the packets were assembled, so.
Got you. That was, that was, that was my end. As Paul was saying, um, this year, you know, the, the partners in the coalition talked about how to handle this year with COVID. Uh, we also got feedback from our lobbyists, lobbying firm Manasanning and John Favazza. Uh, they all felt that it's probably is one of the more important years to have, uh, some feet that have their ear to the ground and are working closely with what's going on in Annapolis, because you're just not gonna have the public access. Um, just the latest conversation I had with John, nothing's changed down there for the upcoming session. Um, you're gonna be able to visit, visit legislators one at a time by appointment only. They have to escort you in the buildings. That doesn't allow for us to do, uh, like a large group meeting like we've done in the past, where we have, you know, forty, fifty, hundred people in a room.
And Jim, I'm gonna interrupt you. I tricked you. I'm looking at my notes, so we're gonna wear masks all times.
Oh, okay.
I missed the sign, and I tricked you. I, I lulled you to take it off, so wanna make sure we're all adhering to guidelines.
So I have to say, your mask and shirt cord, you coordinated, very nice.
One could say you've been muffled.
Um, well, anyway, uh, going back to that, uh, you know, having a lobbyist on, on the ground is gonna be really important this year. Uh, it's gonna be one of the least, um, uh, I think, active, publicly active years, but there's gonna be a lot happening. So there's still some things with Thornton Funding, it's gonna be taking place. We're talking, they're talking about, of course, a lot with police reform, how that's gonna impact our county. Uh, we have still several items on the agenda list. The budget, of course, is always concerned. There were some revenue projections that actually were better than expected down there, but that still didn't alleviate the shortfalls. So, um, all the partners so far have unanimously agreed to continue the effort this year, particularly, feel it's one of our most important years to have a lobbyist in place. Um, your list of Coalition Agenda Items, you're gonna see a lot of stuff you're very familiar with, because these have been long-term efforts, uh, by the coalition to try to move forward. Uh, of course, IED one has always been the top of that list now, as long as I can remember, that's been on it. Uh, we've, of course, have gotten Phase One, which will be complete this year, but we're still struggling to get Phase Two, um, funding for that. The last, uh, application that the county put in jointly with the state for infra-grant was turned down, so, uh, right now, we don't see any county fi, or any state funding coming for Phase Two construction part. The engineering and design will be done this year, so we're looking forward to try to keep pushing that along. Anytime during this, if you have any questions, please stop me. I don't wanna, um, waste your time, because I know you're, you're familiar with a lot of these items.
Yeah, I, I do have a question.
Sure.
Maybe Kirk or somebody can help me with this. Uh, I, I do agree with what you said, Paul, about, with the, the need for lobbyists. I, I personally feel that, because we're sort of outnumbered, we need somebody to speak for us, and we're not, you know, the, the lobbyists will be there even during COVID, making phone calls. But what I, I guess concerns me a little bit is, uh, some of these, your, the wish list, I'll call it, is that fair?
Yep.
Of things we'd like, uh, some you may, we, I may agree with and I may not agree with. So we still have a sh, just 'cause we're, it's still ultimately, each one individually, we'd have a shot at agreeing or disagreeing with when it comes down to happening, correct? I mean, I mean, if I voted for lobbyists and I have something I'm against on this list, where does that set the Commissioners?
Well, the way, the way the rules of the road work that we, we adopt every year at our first meeting, um, all the partners of the coalition have what, what's called veto power. So, you know, this, the coalition is about having every item on the list being jointly accepted by every partner. Now, that may mean you have a little bit of division within the group, but if the majority of the Commissioners support every item in that items on the list, if there's an item on the list that the Commissioners, as a body, do not support.
Right.
They have the ability to come in and say, take that one off. That doesn't mean whoever put that on the list can't lobby for it individually through their own end.
Got you.
But the coalition is about having a unified voice, and the last thing we want, and, uh, what's been, you know, makes you much less effective, is if you walk down and you're advocating for an item for the coalition, which lists the partners, and then you have a partner group sending letters saying we oppose it. So we wanna eliminate that at the beginning. So if there's an item on this list that the Commissioners don't support as a whole, as a body, then they're to let us, let the group know, and then we take it off the list.
And that could be done at a later time, correct?
Well, it need to.
We're coming close to that later time.
Yeah, it's, this has been talked about at the meetings here for a while. We wanna get that resolved, because November tenth, uh, the delegation hosts their, the Washington County Day, where they meet with all the different groups. That has always been the day that the coalition, uh, we use it during the GHC's lunch hour to let the coalition go in and say, here's our agenda for the, for the year.
And we're putting a booklet together, so we have it as well. So if there's a concern, you know, now's the time, it, it may not be this minute, but this week, if there's a concern, please reach out to us, so we can have that conversation.
Is there an item you have in mind, Randy?
There's a couple on there, yeah.
Yeah, so you'll want an answer from us by the end of the week.
That'd be good. I mean, yeah.
My quandary is, pardon the interruption, my quandary is some of these are some important theory, it's how you finance them. It gets down to the final answer.
Right.
And I don't wanna be blatantly saying no to things that maybe could work out that the finances of the county can handle that, so.
And those are conversations we love to have, that in principle, we agree, but what are the pieces that make it difficult? And then we can have the conversations coalition, as Jim said, so we have, uh, one voice, and if there's concerns, we have it. And then we can have the conversations coalition, as Jim said, so we have, uh, one voice, and if there's concerns, we have it now. Um, and certainly want your feedback and again-
I think where I stand is I'm, I'm okay with the, with the lobbyists, but I also wanna have a voice with the majority of us saying we don't, we don't particularly support these, and maybe for the exact reason President Klein just said, because of funding. And there, there, most of them are very good, there's a couple, you know, I just, I'd wanna voice in before I hired the lobbyist to do something I didn't really want them to do, if that's one way to sum it up.
Yeah, and that's, and that's part of the process, you know, what, I mean, in a perfect world, and I know, uh, th- this group's busy from being in that chair, so how, how you guys, where, in a perfect world is, you know, we send out the updates every week when we do the meetings, and as you look through the list, try to get that back early in the, in the process. So we kinda could let the group know ahead of time that this is gonna be a, a point of contention on that end.
I, I, I guess what I'm saying, this, if we just agree to all these, it doesn't obligate us financially to anything, absolutely not.
And, and as I go through these, maybe we could talk about that, 'cause I think I, I kinda know where we're, where we're heading here. So, I'm assuming seventy and eighty-one, I sixty-five are, that's, th- those are county, you know, basically items put forth by the county.
I say, John, to the ball stadium, that's what it is.
Yep, yep.
Everyone's just tone around it, I'll say it.
I, we'll get, we'll get to that. Sure, sure. Um, so for the three, the first three transportation items, um, the Public Safety Training Center, I know you guys have, uh, have had some savings that's been able to move that project forward a little more, that's great to see. If there's any other requests for that, I did talk to Scott Hobbs a little bit yesterday and mentioned that he, you know, if he could get me the write-ups, the blue sheets, we call them, the one-pagers on each item, talk with commissioners about if there's any requests still for the Public Safety Training Center, or whether that item's gonna move, move out. Uh, the transit commuter study is something, um, Senator Quarterman, when he was delegate, was trying to put in legislation to get them to do a study on bringing the Mark train west up to Hagerstown. Um, the Greater Hagerstown also has, uh, some ideas about having commuter traffic go south to what, um, to Winchester along the WW Railroad, which is an idea that's just a, a, really just an idea. Uh, but if you're gonna do a study, maybe you look at both of those at the same time, that's what that item is. Um, the multi-use sports and event center, again, that was on our project last year, and it really hasn't changed a lot. Um, right now, it's, what we're doing is just trying to keep that in front of the, front of the state. Uh, the state has been, um, state leadership has talked to the Maryland State of Authority who's working for phase two of that project. Again, this is not, uh, moving forward with it, it's more just giving them exposure, uh, to let them understand that this is a project that we're looking at for urban UIP two, so to speak, as part of the UIP two study. Uh, whether or not that moves forward, this will be well after, um, well, here at the end of two thousand twenty is when they expect phase two to be done for the report, sometimes towards the end of the year. I don't expect that really till December, maybe even into twenty twenty-one is the way it looks like. Um, I think the last update the city gave was, uh, the consultant, uh, doesn't even think they'll have a draft report done by the end of November. So it probably will be in December, and with the holidays, you figure twenty twenty-one till that's even finished. Uh, so before you really can move forward, you need to look at that, the lo- local groups, uh, decision-makers would need to look at that and decide where to go. Uh, but you wanna keep it in front of the state if we decide to move forward.
And is that one of the concerns, Commissioner Klein, that, again, by endorsing this agenda, doesn't mean we're gonna fund it? Um, we, you know, we hear loudly and clearly from the city and the county that there's not dollars for this necessarily, and the private sector needs to take the lead, and that's the approach we're taking.
Yeah, that's my, my approach, I just didn't wanna call any project that been named just to stay in the project.
This doesn't commit the county or the city to say, we're gonna put money towards this.
Till we see the funding mechanism, it wouldn't be fair to prejudge it, so that's why I brought that up. So, as this process moves along and we see the funding mechanisms, that would be a better time to make the judgment.
You're not alone, yeah.
So that's my, that's my point.
That's basically what I was trying to say.
Yep.
Loud and clear, yeah, we're not saying if we, if you endorse this-
And this is one of the reasons I wanted you all in here, 'cause not everybody were on the phone conference calls. I wanted the commissioners to be able to have this together, so thank you.
And keep in mind, while we've had this on the thing, is why we've gotten seven hundred thousand dollars from the state to do phase one and phase two, which had no cost to the, to the county. So, that's kinda one of the reasons we try to keep this moving, just to get some state funds. Now, again, with this project, whether the project moves forward, we're, we're not even at that point to make the decision. And what we've tried to do, hearing from the different bodies, is get state support for the first early steps, where traditionally that can be split, we've kinda recognized that that needs to be state-funded to get to phase one and phase two done, and then we'll, we'll see what happens after that. Um, the Jonathan Street community, there's some really good work going on down there, you've probably seen some, um, articles, not just locally, but in, that's been in the Washington Post, Baltimore Sun. Uh, the Western Maryland Community Development Corporation, Terrence Moore and Reggie Turner, uh, have all been working on a variety of historical projects they wanna revitalize and bring into play. Secretary Holt's been up, uh, to meet with the groups and with the city, and looking at a variety of different projects there. I think that really benefit the community as a whole, um, not just that area, and, uh, we wanna support that, that as they move forward. Um, uh, the new item that was just put on, uh, after a meeting with the city, had to do with drug house remediation ordinance. This came through from Councilman Heffernan. Um, in short, uh, what the concern is, is when you, when, uh, the city police have, have a house that's been a nuisance property, and they busted it for being a drug house, uh, there's a lot of chemicals and things in that, fentanyl, et cetera, that could be in that property, that, uh, the police dogs don't even, you know, they don't even let the police dogs go in because of how toxic those chemicals are. There's questions whether the state legislation allows, um, for the city to put things into their, into their ordinances about a cleanup, proper cleanup. So, if you're gonna just take that and, and re-rent it out to another family, get busted, re-rent it again, without doing the proper cleanup with all those chemicals, right now, the state, you could, you could put things, you could, the city could do some things on their own, but nothing more stringent than the state law allows currently. And they believe Maryland's laws need updated, and they've looked at some ordinances in Martinsburg, as well as in California, that have helped, uh, deter landlords from constantly renting, you know, over and over again to tenants that tend to bring in the drug use within a, a property. And the city is looking at ways that they could beef up state ordinances to improve on that. Uh, that's a new item there. Uh, tourism, um, the, uh, the town of Williamsport, of course, National Park Service Headquarters Visitor Center, that's, that project's moving along really well, but they don't have money to do the interior, a part of it when it's finished, so they're looking, they're gonna need a little more state funding there, they're trying to identify exactly what that number is.
Yeah, by interior, furniture.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's bid out, it'll be, it'll be rough fitted, so they'll have the, like, I think it's the front room, and apologize, Jeff, but, you know, Donnie's, Donnie's the expert on this, we're gonna wait to see, but I, I believe the front part of the building that they'd like to use is the visitor center. They know that you get the basic structure in place, but as far as furniture, uh, final amenities in there, things like that, they're gonna need to raise some money to do the interior. All the money that they have raised is gonna construct the building in the National Park Service Headquarters first, and that's basically what they've been able to raise, it just covers that. Um, let's see here, uh, going to the next one, uh, the South County Rail Trail. This isn't about building the trail, this was, uh, put forward by our Convention and Visitors Bureau. There's a lot of ownership debates, tiling issues, access rights that have been ongoing, uh, for a long time around that trail. They wanna submit legislation to compel DNR to actually demonstrate that it has a clear title to property, uh, or not, and then if so, enter into a meaningful planning process to mitigate any conflicts with neighboring properties. So, this is about resolving once and for all, is that a clean right of way, does the state own it, does it not own it? Access issues, if it, if it does, uh, you know, get that sorted out and resolved, um, through DNR, if, and then determine what to do, if, if, you know, if the, if they can't, if they find out they do not really have a true right of way in some of the properties, then that project would be dead anyway. So, this is kinda trying to move forward one way or the other to resolve it before we keep talking about this project in the future. Um, tourist welcome center, uh, I eighty-one is the only interstate highway in Maryland that does not have a welcome center. Uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau would like, uh, for the, uh, Office of Tourism Development to review that and to see if there's any opportunities there. Uh, the CVB is also willing to partner in the operations of that center, which, uh, throws a little carrot to the state as far as, um, you know, willingness to try to look at an I eighty-one visitor center. As you guys well know, um, uh, most of the tourism travel is going north and south, uh, we, we benefit from that along the I eighty-one corridor, those hotels tend to be the busiest right now. Uh, the Valley Mall does a good bit of business from tourism on that side, so, uh, what can we do to look at putting a, a tourist welcome center there? Another newer item that came on just in the last couple of weeks had to do with college transfer legislation. Um, there's, there was a bill submitted last year, House Bill Eight fourteen, that they wanna resubmit and work into that. In short, this involves, if you go to a Maryland community college like HCC, there's been some frustration is when you go to transfer your credits to another four-year school in Maryland, that some schools take those credits, other schools do not, for whatever reasons. Uh, I think the community college presidents believe that if you have an accredited program and you're transferring to Maryland school, and you really want a two-plus-two system, which is what Maryland's kinda, uh, supported for a long time, then those credits should automatically count. So, you know, if you're accredited and you get, uh, courses that apply fine for HCC, then when they go to a four-year school to complete their studies, those credits should count, you shouldn't have to take those classes over. Um, so this involves, uh, you know, not only, uh, trying to push the Maryland colleges to automatically accept those, but also, uh, making them report on any denial, so, uh, MHEC is aware of what's being denied and what isn't. Uh, USMH, as, as we do every year, we try to keep track of funding this, again, it's gonna be a little more important year than the past. Uh, I was at an advisory board meeting just this past week, and I know, uh, their budget got cut pretty tough, uh, so they had to take some, some both personnel cuts and some other items, and they're concerned about next year. So we're gonna advocate for trying to keep the funding up there. USMH isn't treated any different than any of the other system schools, when they cut the big budget to the system schools, University System Maryland, then that cut gets applied evenly around, like Shady Grove, as well as USMH. So they're getting treated the same as others, uh, but those cuts to the system have been, been pretty challenging. Um, on the health issue, Medicaid reimbursement, uh, this came from County Commissioner Michael Schmidt. Uh, so this is about, uh, trying to up the, uh, amount of, uh, the state pays for each individual call that would help our volunteer fire and rescue, uh, systems, trying to look at that legislation as well. Um, we're waiting for some more details on that to come from the, the county side. Um, and that's everything on the main list. Uh, for the watch list items, the watch list are things we just basically tell our lobbyists to be aware of, to keep track of. Uh, things like gaming revenue, any shifting of liabilities from the state to the counties. Uh, police reform legislation is a newer item, trying to monitor what's happening with the police reform.
I have a, I have a question on that. Being told that there's a effort to eliminate the Police Bill of Rights-
Yes.
Issue, which would, uh, basically take away some of their protection and then more legal liability. Is that something you'll be watching as well?
Yes, I, that's absolutely something we'll be watching. Um, we've had conversations with Sheriff Mullendor and the Chief Kiefer, uh, on this, and our lobbyist as well, to try to keep up on this. The lobbying for Manas Canning also represents the Chiefs and Sheriffs Association for Maryland, so they're really in tune to what's going on. Uh, Andrea is the main contact person down there for Manas Canning, uh, and she is const- she's been working really, you know, hard the last couple of weeks, as they've had a lot of these different, uh, workshop meetings within, uh, both the House and the Senate, and we're kinda waiting to see what legislation gets, gets supported, particularly any legislation that comes from leadership, which tends to be the legislation they focus on and move forward. We were trying to make sure we were getting in, um, uh, you know, our point of view, from the rural counties' point of view. Um, I know Sheriff Mullendor is involved, I think, uh, pretty extensively with the Chiefs, Chief and, uh, Sheriff's Association, so he's on top of this, um, and, you know, we've tried to share some of the good numbers that we have, uh, based on how our departments run rural-wise, and, you know, making sure that if they're trying to do a one-size-fits-all, that it doesn't, you know, impact us in a negative way.
Jim, um, if, if I could ask two questions or comments. Um, last year, we had included the Dolman Black Heritage Museum, and I see it's been removed for this year. I personally would like to see that added back on.
Yep.
I know the city of Hagerstown, um, has supported financially that project. We, we're providing temporary space, and I'll say time and again, we want that to be temporary space, so they can move on with their project and, and their building. I would like to see that added back on, last year, we had that, I think, as a watch list, just to start introducing it.
I believe, uh, we had a, we put in a, a informational page on that-
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, so, on that side, so, um, and, and we didn't necessarily take it out, we just didn't hear anymore about it this year. So, they, of course, were free to come to our, uh, reception, but this year, we're probably not gonna do a reception.
Yeah, I know, last year, I went down and-
Yep.
Um, myself, a couple of members of the, uh, Dolman Black Heritage Museum, delegate now Senator Quarterman, uh, I think it was, uh, Councilwoman Keller, met with, uh, some of the leadership to discuss this project in particular, and they seemed to, to like it. So, I, I think what we did last year, or this year, kinda getting their, their, they were aware of the project, but just letting them know that grounds well as community support, political support back home for that project, I think would be good to include that again this year.
I mean, while we talk offline a little on what you're looking for there, but if we wanna do a one-pager, those type of things, we'll, we could bring that up to the group next month.
My, my other question would be, I'm just kinda wondering, you mentioned, um, the lobbying group is representing, did you say, the Sheriff's and Police Association, or?
The, the Sheriff's and Chiefs Association of Maryland, the, the Manas Canning, that's one of their clients.
Just wondering, I know with Manas Canning, we kind of have some dedicated lobbyists. A- any conflicts with our projects and other clients they may represent?
No, they, they, uh, John's been aware of what we have, and they would let us know if there was any kinda conflicts on that side. They look at that when they hire clients, um, over the years, at times. Um, if he's pulling in a different client, he'll, he'll let us know if there's some sort of those issues. But they're, they're pretty, pretty good about making sure that doesn't happen. The chief and, uh, by the way, the chief Sheriff's Association probably would be pretty much in line, aligned well with us.
That's a good thing.
So that's, that's a positive, you know, thing, that's, that's why they have one person on their team that's doing nothing but focusing on that.
I think that's a good thing for what we're advocating for in Washington County. The flip side could also be true for a, a different group that they might represent. That's all.
Okay.
Jim, I have a curious question, uh, more curiosity, this is a big list, there's a lot of really good things on this list.
Yeah.
Do you prior- do they prioritize what they, do you have a priority list of what you, obviously, I eighty-one's been going on forever.
Yep.
So, I mean, do you have, do you, you can't obviously jump all them together, do, do you prioritize some of these, like?
We did have a little discussion about that, because I feel the li- I, I personally feel the list is getting a little long, uh, to a point. Uh, but it's, you know, the, the thing is, it's kinda difficult when we're doing these projects that last ten years that are on our list. So, you know, we keep, we need to keep putting those out there, but we kinda see this as, as just a couple new ones that we're trying to promote. Um, you know, but, you know, Randy, let me, let me clear, the, the coalition, I mean, myself and Paul, all's we're doing is helping with the management, the partners need to have those discussions as the group.
Right.
So, you know, they prioritize, we're, we're, when we've compiled this list, we feel that's what the partners have said they wanted on it. And we asked them actually last meeting, is there anything that we wanna remove? Uh, one thing we did, we didn't remove it, but we moved UIP one to the watch list, 'cause there's, that basically is a completed project. There is one more installment, that because of the budget, you know, I don't wanna say there's great concern that we wouldn't get what's promised there, but we wanna make sure the lobbyists is keeping in touch with that last two point five million issue. Um, so as we kinda highlight through these, you know, I know the lobbyist, the, the transportation items, he always mentions, which we do, but he'll focus on some of the newer, newer things in particular. Uh, and also, if, if we get, like, last year, you know, we really were, had some great success with the, uh, tax exemption for the, uh, aircraft parts.
Right.
Um, and that, that issue, we had an opening that we noticed in the fall. So, there were some changes in the committee, and actually, one of the, uh, delegates that, that tended to be in opposition to that, that caused some challenges in the past, had left that committee. We saw that as a real opportunity, so we, you know, moved real aggressively in the off-season.
Initiative for two or three years, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, actually, it's been on-
You don't get it the first time.
It's only been on our list for a couple of years, but I believe that was came from the eastern shore for multiple years before that, it just never moved.
Just as an example, um, this is just an example, I think all are equally important in most cases. Like the Medicaid reimbursement, that helps the fire, the first responders, and it helps the county, because they make more money. And, you, you know, it's, it's just things like that would, I, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Well, to Jim's point and Commissioner Klein's point, aircraft parts has been three or four years.
Right.
Uh, these folks need to see this kind of in the back of their minds, so when there's an opening, so like this ambulance reimbursement, if we see an opening, to, to move it in there, and, uh, that's what some of these are, is just to keep it on the, the list of people having it back in their mind. Yeah, and, and, you know, we look at the priorities, you know, again, I eighty-one, chances of that happening this year, coming up, probably slim, but we won't put it on there so that when the opportunity arises, so, yeah, good question.
Thank you.
So that's, that's kinda the, the summary of the items. So that's, that's kind of the, the summary of the items there. Um, again, we're trying to have this all ready for our delegation on the tenth of November. Um, uh, but I will say that this is always a fluid list. Uh, does it, you know, to be effective, you want to have it in place early. Like I said, the aircraft parts, one of the reasons that happened really was work that we did between October and December versus what we did afterwards. Uh, most of the heavy lifting was done in the off-season. Uh, the lobbyists, that we, we formed a partnership with the Eastern Shore uh, contingency and kind of got together on some phone calls and shared what we could do, you know, how do we want to, what's the strategy for this year? And let our lobbyists work with their lobbying people to try to come up with the right strategy. Uh, so, um, we do want to try to get something in place and stick with it, but if anything ever comes up or changes, this could be adapted anytime, even during the session. I mean, uh, one of the reasons gaming revenue is always on the watch list, that was a big uh, win for the coalition years ago. That came up to play. I think it was Delegate Myers at the time, brought it to everyone's attention. Um, within like a day and a half, our lobbying team had Jim Ovis, who was the gaming director at the time from the county, in front of the right people and we were able to kind of stave off that uh, start off that effort to uh, pull some of the gaming revenue. So, you know, if something comes up down the road, we certainly can, um, you know, always adapt and change and add. But up in, you know, we want to try to have a formal agenda list by the end of this month so that we can kind of move forward. Uh, if you submit your legislation, I think early legislations will be even more important this year, getting stuff in early uh, before it gets bogged down, although there's some questions on whether or not the leadership, you know, how much legislation they're going to really see this year with COVID. I've heard some rumors and again, just rumors about, you know, having a really limited session where only some main bills and putting off some of the smaller bills until next year. But again, that's just a rumor. Uh, but no one, not knowing what COVID's going to bring, I think, trying to get our agenda in early. And if there's members of our delegation that need to submit some legislation to help some things, if they could get that submitted prior to session starting, that usually helps to get through the process quicker.
We're also going to be creative, doing maybe some Zoom committee meetings with some of these folks instead of being in person.
Yeah, that's a good point. We will mention, we're not exactly sure how we're going to handle the day in Annapolis, so to speak, right now. It's still tentatively scheduled for the last Wednesday in January. Um, that's in your, that's in your sheet.
Yeah, last page of the month.
Yeah, January twenty-seventh. Um, we still have the Calvert House reserved for the receptions. But at this time, you know, if, if, you know, I would say the odds are against that that would take place. Uh, the Calvert House will allow us to keep our deposit, just move it to next year. So we won't lose that. Uh, we've already had some discussions with them. But we may try to do a virtual, uh, if we could get the lobbying team to get uh, uh, maybe one or two type leader, leadership positions available for a Zoom call. We might try to do something like that in, in its stead. We're still trying to work through it and we're waiting to see exactly what January brings.
Okay, with all of that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion is to, to award the ten thousand dollars. Okay, I have a first and a second. Any other conversation, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Again, if you have any other questions, please feel free to call.
Thanks for coming in on short notice.
Your pleasure. Thanks for the signal. Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Keep that mask going all the way out the.
You got it.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, Division Emergency Services, uh, discussion, Kirk Downey.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, the Division of Emergency Services currently includes the Department of Emergency Management. And um, i- it has been determined that to streamline the operational efficiencies in both Emergency Services and Emergency Management, it would be beneficial to have them as standalone units. Uh, the fiscal impact would be negligible when the emergency manager would report directly to the county administrator. This is in um, line with what some of the other, some other jurisdictions in Maryland do. Certainly not all of them, but other jurisdictions do have um, standalone emergency management uh, divisions. Uh, it is also consistent with where the state seems to be moving. Uh, there's consideration of moving the Maryland Emergency Management Agency out from under the Department of the Military and making it its own standalone unit. Uh, this is also a recognition that emergencies, as we are seeing now, are not always fire and EMS uh, related. Uh, there are natural disasters, uh, there are public health emergencies, there could be other types of emergencies that don't necessarily uh, require a fire and EMS response. For those reasons, uh, we think it's appropriate uh, that the uh, Division of Emergency Services uh, focus on the provision of emergency services and the uh, Division of Emergency Management be its own uh, standalone separate unit. Um, of course, this also coincides with the time the uh, Division of Emergency Services is expanding uh, with the hiring of thirty-three additional firefighters as part of the SAFRA grant.
I'd, I'd motion to reorganize the Division of Emergency Services and Division Emergency Managers as presented.
Uh, but first, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our open session. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Uh, but first and second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.